We'll open the meeting for Monday, July 25. I'm going to take a motion to accept the agenda as may be amended.
So Luke, um, I'd like to move number nine to number... Let's go to number seven and then seven down. We have these folks here.
Yep.
Sitting in the office. So nine to number seven, and then seven moves to eight and so on.
Nope, I'm good with it.
Okay, all in favor of the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, there's two sets of minutes here that you two are at that I wasn't, so that's up to you.
I'm gonna make them, uh, I'm just gonna say let's table them. I mean, she didn't, she didn't understand the writing on one and she needs the timing on the other.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll table the minutes of July 8th and July 14th. Are there any select board member concerns?
No.
No, not this time.
Okay. I just have the one I called through about earlier.
Yeah.
Okay. We only have a couple people in, but anyone here have something they would like to bring up that is not already on the agenda? Okay? Could you identify yourself for the minutes?
Sure. Matt Missouri.
Okay.
Uh, last year, I took part in a very specific trapping situation at the end of River Road.
Uh huh.
Uh, the problem was, the dam had progressed so far that the water had risen to the point where it was washing up along the side of River Road and that there were telephone poles fifteen feet out in the water. And neither of those situations were tenable. Uh, the road's not designed to have water hitting it.
Mm-huh.
And the telephone pole, I'm sure, would be happier if it were on dry land as opposed to in the water. Um, I did something that I found distasteful and not to my ethics, which was catch all the beavers at that main lodge at the end. The understanding was that fish and wildlife, uh, was supposed to put a, uh, contraption called the beaver baffle, which allows you as the town to control the height of the water. And I had seen no action there or any movement on that. And I'm wondering, you meant what the status of that is? Anyone is, is coming up or?
Well, we had a meeting with the group that I brought in, but it's underneath the state, so the federal guys I brought in. But I think you're talking further up River Road, past?
No, no, at, at Route, at Jay's house.
At Jay's house, okay.
That, it's a, it's a short pass, they put a dam up and they flooded the whole area.
Oh, yeah.
So I, we call that Lake Hagenberth right now. Right now, it's muck. Black and dead and looks like the way that, uh, the town manager said he used to treat the beavers, which was wait for the governor to say there's an emergency and then send in the backhoes to destroy the dams, which is not tenable and not ethical.
Right. So you want to give us an update on what?
Well, basically, we met with, um, the federal group, um, the USDA, um, to do just what you're talking about, the beaver baffles. They said they are not possible in that location. Um, though, there's too much water behind it, there's too much hydraulic pressure, they will not take that. Uh, we've been going back and forth with the engineers and the, actually, the state, because the state owns that land, uh, we're not allowed to go on it until they give us permission. They're making recommendations on how they want it done, some are possible, some are not, and we've been going back and forth. But the process has been ongoing with the engineers and, and the state, and we're just trying to get the permit done. The wetlands folks and everybody, everybody agrees that it has to be lowered because we have seven, the first seven culverts along River Road have water in them.
Right.
But we are not allowed at this time to do anything.
So I think at one point, Steve-
Do you have that in writing from them?
I mean, I have the, I have the letters from the state that went back to the engineers and-
I'd just like to make sure we have record.
Yeah, we have a record that said-
The state is not, the state is not allowing us to do this.
That's correct.
But we want to-
I have to go.
Okay. Just make sure you keep it, that's all.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a-
Is this to me is not-
It's saying, "We want you to do it by hand removal, you can only do certain things, there wasn't any access, they weren't gonna grant access." And we have that all in writing.
That's my point.
Yeah.
When you take the dam apart by hand-
You gotta remove-
Leave the pieces right there. Don't take them away.
Okay.
Can we let Nancy in?
The engineer that I used on another job laughed and said, "They're just gonna have a party and rebuild the dam that night."
So Steve-
If you don't take the pieces away.
Oh, yeah, take them away.
Well, they twiddle thos, the sooner they're coming, they're coming down.
That's the type of responses that we're getting.
So Steve?
Yes?
You had mentioned to get them into a meeting with us over a month ago. Can we just contact the people with Nicole Kessering, our engineer, and set up a meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, we should. It's gone on well.
The meeting, the meeting that I attended with the federal group was basically that, and one of them is a Tom, I forget his last name, that lives in town, okay? And he basically said, "Three years ago, we could've managed it." That it's gone too high now that the, that the baffles wouldn't. But three or four years ago, it was a lot lower.
Right. It's gotta be a foot or a foot and a half lower now because it isn't being maintained.
And it would've been easier then to do whatever, but now we're dealing with the state. So can we just set up a meeting? We got the state people. And, 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 and it's probably gonna have to be to work around their time during the daytime.
Right.
But let's figure out between the three of us when we can attend a meeting during the day.
Yeah.
All right? And then hopefully, the citizens also show up to that hearing.
Okay, well, citizens be notified as we offer these hearings.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good, I'll definitely attend that.
Especially that one, they aren't.
We'll make sure that, we'll make sure Chuck gets ahold of you, because the more citizens we have, it'll be more impactful to the state.
Especially since you are a trapper also, and I know, like, last year, you were like, "I'm only gonna take five or six 'cause I don't want to."
Right. Well, if we succeeded in that and the dam is not, I mean, the lodge is now abandoned because there's a duck, goose nest on top and no beaver would stand there.
So it's abandoned altogether?
Yeah, but if you go a tenth of a mile up, up river, there's more beavers over there.
Yeah.
And they're gonna see that and say, "Hey, let's go down there."
Nice, brand-new place for us.
Yeah.
Be great.
It's like living in the city.
Good to know that. Thank you for the input, though.
Thank you. And Andrew McKenna will be on. And Andrew McKenna will be, and that will make sure that he's-
Good, I'll volunteer labor, that will help.
Yeah.
It's a running process for me as well.
Yeah, 'cause it's backing up into Andrew's house and his neighbor uphill from him.
Yeah.
It's coming into his yard also.
Yeah, so, let's just get a meeting so, 'cause we can't go without a winter.
No. Okay, um, anybody, anything else you want to bring up that's not?
You guys listening, Steve?
Can they, can they hear me over there, like Roger and Nancy? Do they have something they want to bring in that's not already on the agenda?
I can hear you, Steve, and I'm just here to see what's happening. Naming everybody.
Thanks, Roger.
Hey, Roger.
Okay.
Uh, Chris, this is Nancy, I'm here as a member of the library board.
Okay, good. Do we have any liquor control tonight?
No, no liquor control.
Okay.
So we're moving now to the library pavilion?
So, uh, this past winter, the library had sent a letter to the select board requesting, less than us, November, uh, requesting the research to do, uh, some pricing, I think, so maybe next year, we could get a pavilion estimated and possibly put it on the ballot. Um, I have made several phone calls to architects and contractors who have not wanted to take it on at this point. Um, in order to move it to the next level, what I'm gonna recommend that we do is send out, put out an RFP for a design-build proposal, uh, to build a pavilion that we make some basic specs for.
And do we have, um, recommendation for size?
Well, the request was, was, I think it was, was it thirty by forty or twenty? I don't, it was either twenty by forty-
It was whatever we could.
What do you, how many people do you think you'd want to have in it?
You want to talk about that or do you want me to?
Well, we want to use it for, um, for instance, Monday night, the concert was rained out, it had to go to the golf course. It would be nice, now, we're not gonna hold an overflowing crowd, but it would be nice to hold, say, a hundred people, I think. It would be nice to have fans in the ceiling, electricity, running water.
Running water?
Well, it's raining out, so you got it.
Well, why not? I mean, if you're building and you're gonna have it all torn up, why not just run the water line out there? One never knows.
You might as well drain back, is what they're saying.
Yeah. And the thing is, we're, we're not here tonight to make enemies because I know, I'm aware, and all of us here probably are aware of what, of what this TIF district is pulling on your time, but I guess we're here just to remind you that other things in town are also important, and this pavilion is very important. And it's not just to, uh, as you know, I, I run the senior program, but it's not just important to them. Uh, Monday, I was at town hall for the rec meeting, and the downstairs part was a mess because all those campers, because it had rained, were all down in that one little area where they could've been in this nice, open pavilion. A few weeks ago, the seniors were there for kind of like an impromptu cocktail party, I guess you would call it. And, uh, truthfully, we couldn't get under the, the pavilion we have now because it was full of kids, but when I went over there to look at it, I didn't even want to be under it. So if you haven't seen that pavilion lately, you need to go and visit it. It's in really, it appears, what do I know? It appears to be in really bad shape. The tables under it are in bad shape. So you're gonna have to do something to that anyway. So let's put that effort and money toward a new one.
So this was in front of us about a year and a half ago?
Well, November of last year.
November 9, 21.
Summer, I think.
No, it was, this is a letter that came out November 9th. But you were in front of the board prior to us doing our budget, so it was in the spring or the summer of 21.
Yeah.
Okay? This board approved to move forward with getting an architect or something at that time. Um, I've been waiting for some type of proposal on, um, you know, and, and then on the, on the other side of this, it was because like the second-to-last paragraph here, the annual, "Building a pavilion would be beneficial to our community and would help it leave the annual expense of approximately $6,000 spent renting tents." So it was supposed to be replacing the tents. I don't think the tents, to be honest with you, was for a hundred people.
Well, I did, no, I could be wrong on that, I don't-
Well, I'm just-
I didn't put any study into that. I pulled out a number.
I don't think it was.
Two hundred, maybe?
No, no. The pavilion that we have on the other side at the rec field is not for a hundred people.
It's hardly for fifty, I think.
But, I mean, a hundred people, you're talking not a pavilion. I just want to get that part. So something of, we have to come up with what size and, because this room here sits fifty people, I believe.
Uh, this, this occupancy count is different than what you would have for an open-air structure.
This is, this is thirty by, um, twenty-one, twenty, uh, twenty-eight. It's like, this is basically a thirty by thirty and you're talking one and a half times is probably for an outdoor to seat that many.
Yep.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think what we have to do is get an architect, whatever, on board, okay? And to design something. It may be, I mean, Goodrose doesn't do it anymore or whatever, but Lavalley's does do.
I have someone.
You have someone?
Yeah, I have someone I could plan.
Okay.
I think it aesthetically needs to be pleasing, too, because-
Definitely.
As much as you want to hold, you know, a lot of people, and you're, you know, a hundred people might be over, like, way too big.
Yeah.
But I think that it would be something that needs to look nice there, that still allows the sun to come in and everything else, I think would be, it's, we need it. You need it for those events, we need it for the, the camp. Um, I s, you know, a year ago, I sat here and said the same thing.
All of you supported it, I remember that night myself.
Hundred percent supportive of it, so.
Yeah, and it's, it's, right now, it's trying to find an architect or a structural engineer that will sign off on it.
Yep.
Because I can start writing grants to even help fund it, but I can't without a plan.
I have a guy I can call through.
Does this still wanting to be, because in order for it to do camps-
And he works a lot with Killington, so he's here a lot.
Yeah. If, uh, with the camps, like, if they're gonna use it in inclement weather, it has to have some sort of movable side protection.
It could.
As well. I mean, it would have to if we're gonna use it at that level.
Yeah, I, I hear Chris saying that he has a person, I hear Steve saying he has a person, can you two get together? Find out which person would be, and then maybe, like we're saying with the beavers, we set up an appointment for the daytime or whatever-
I just don't look at the property.
That we get an architect or whichever one it is, and we sit, you know, and then, and then we go through it.
And that's really our purpose, is just to get it moving again.
A pavilion that sits a hundred people may take up a really good portion of it.
Please forget, I said a hundred people.
It wasn't recorded.
I guess it was.
No, we want to get it going, we want, I think where I was sitting, I thought we would be seeing something from you.
Well, that's it, we've done nothing, because I thought it was coming from all of you, too.
Let us jump in and give you a hand.
So, um, and I realize you, right now, this town is in a really busy-
That's not, we, we, we do everything else. It's not, don't worry about that, this is nothing getting in front of.
But I just-
Matt, you got your hand up?
Yes, um, a permanent structure, uh, that meets the needs with semi-permanent, something like an ornate to extend the capacity without building another pavilion next to it.
Thank you.
It'd also be a good idea in case you have the overflow.
That's where the engineer comes in.
Yeah. But that's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
I love to see live theater, but not many people dig that these days, so.
Well, your librarian has a degree in it.
Really?
Yeah. We have live theater there, we had a live show.
We have had, we've had Shakespeare.
I hear them from my house.
So can we just get that set up in the next two weeks or whatever? You two talk to, find out which engineer or whatever architect can come in, and we'll go from there.
So we, we don't have, you're not asking us to do anything for it on it?
Yeah, we are, we're gonna ask you to come to the meeting.
Oh, definitely, we can do that.
Let's try to get some, the proper people involved, okay? And then we'll reach back out to you guys to meet with us.
Sounds good.
Okay?
As long as we're working on it.
Keep the ball moving.
Yeah, all we heard was, everybody was turning us down. So if we can find somebody that doesn't, then we're good to go.
Okay. So that brings up the other pavilions, since they brought it up, and I, the pavilion itself is in decent shape, like, the outside of it or whatever other roofing, I think. I didn't really look at it, but, uh, the benches, I mean, you know, somebody like me sitting in the middle, it touches the bottom.
Touches the ground.
And not only that.
I mean, um, I think-
We have replaced a bunch of them, but there are some more that are in need of, and reality is, we probably should be looking at a different style, um, picnic table only because it is such a long span, the way they're set up, that it doesn't lend itself to, to any length of time, so.
Also, the flooring on the bottom, it gets really dirty with kids sitting there with food, crayons, so I don't know if, you know, that just needs to be replaced or added to-
What is the flooring?
It's stone, it's a, it's a peystone.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was.
It's just a peystone, I mean, we can put more peystone in, but-
No, but the problem is, someone spills an ice cream, drops a sandwich, okay? You got bugs everywhere and everything else. If we had a washable surface, okay, it'd be much better.
Oh, absolutely.
And so, like, I think it's time to step up a little bit.
Well, this is also the, the timing, you know, and this wasn't part of the discussion I was gonna start in the next couple of months, but, you know, one of the things that was on the, the capital budget horizon was the rebuilding of the pool in the next three years. And when these things all get relocated and the elevations all change, that whole pavilion is going to either move or be taken down and, and something else done.
I'm not sold yet on the raising of the whole road, but let's just go, for right now, we're sticking to the pavilion.
Right.
And, and I think that when we talk to ex-architect for this other pavilion at the library, maybe just figure something out. You could get a nice concrete floor poured in there or whatever. I mean, I've just started looking at concrete floor that actually is, it looks like wood.
And then we could hose it down, so that's why we need water.
But when you do it, you're gonna need a drain, so when you, if you, if you put everything into whatever, you need a drain to go and you need to get it out. But, or you apron it out, so. So let's just figure out the new pavilion and how to fix the floor on the existing pavilion, so it is a washable, and then also to figure out how to get newer benches in there, because those things are probably twenty years old.
Yep.
Yeah, or more.
Okay, I, I do have one more thing, which I probably should've set up under citizen-
Is it on the agenda?
No. I should've done it under citizen input. The seniors in town, we have an annual picnic, and this year, it's on, it's Thursday, August 4th. And, um, you're all invited to come, and, um, it's catered, Mike Casey's on the access road, it's quite good, I know some of you have been, so I would sincerely like you all to drop in that day and have a bite to eat with the seniors. Starts about four. You don't even have to eat, but just come and say hello to everybody and, and mingle with us, and, uh, you know, we're a huge voting block, we always turn out at the polls.
Don't you like how she threw that in at the very end?
No, I, there are new people in town, and new people in our group, and they don't know you as well as we do.
I believe all three select board members showed up last year.
I hope so. Chris, did you come last year?
He was not on it at that one.
I wasn't on it.
Okay, I'm not-
So it was Chuck, LaFey, myself, and Steve, and we all three showed up.
Okay.
And we'll make it onto our appointment, we just got the notification today by email late in the afternoon.
Oh, from Lucretia, I guess?
From someone.
Okay. Because I, this is my first-
Yeah, yeah, it came in, I saw something later this afternoon.
I did write to Lucretia today to invite town hall.
Yeah, so that's who it was.
But anyway, write it down, please, and if you can't stay in-
They have only went to employees, and maybe that's why I got it as bad.
Do you have a rain in case?
We don't have a rain date, if it rains, we're all gonna squeeze under that terrible pavilion.
There you go. With the old floor.
I don't have a rain date, I mean, if the weather is perfectly horrible that morning, I'm gonna have to, to cancel it, I imagine, 'cause I don't, unless we could come here at the last minute, I don't know.
I'll make sure you two get the invite, since I can send out.
Okay.
Anyway, it's a sincere invitation, so please come for however long you can.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for the invite.
So next up, we have the Declaration of Inclusion.
Yeah, the, this Declaration of Inclusion I've sent to all of you was brought to the town by Andy Solomon and requested that the, uh, select board act on it. And Andy can bring you up this week.
I wanted to just talk a little bit about it, go through what it's all about, I do have it for copies, so, give me a copy. I'm asking the town to consider signing this as a document, the town makes a statement that includes everyone in this, in this state, to be welcomed in this town. And the, uh, the Declaration of Inclusion of Vermont Diversity Equity and Inclusion Initiative, that's what it is. It's a grassroots effort, and Bob Harnish is on the, on-
He's on.
One of the, right, he's, Bob's up there.
Yeah.
Uh, he, uh, he was one of the originators of this, along with several others. One of them, Beva Anderson was involved, too, Beverly Anderson. And what I want to do is, the partners that we have are NWA CP in Vermont, uh, Vermont, and Vermont Interface Alliance, which is Beverly's organization, and then also Vermont Chamber of Commerce, Vermont League of Cities and Towns, Vermont Social Equity Caucus, and Vermont Governor's Office are all partners with us on this initiative. And, uh, and with it, and what it is, is it's a vision that Vermont will become known as the most inclusive state in the nation. And I, I, that's a pretty bold statement, but I think as we go through this a little bit, you'll get an idea. It's, some of it is, uh, our, people in this grassroots roots movement have been distressed by the recent catastrophic events across our country, from the West Coast to the Middle America to the East Coast, and then down south as well. Right now, sixty-two cities and towns have endorsed this effort in Vermont, which represents forty-five percent of the population in Vermont. And the declaration is here, uh, and I'm just gonna read a little bit about it, is the town of Killington condemns racism and welcomes all persons regardless of race, and it goes on, but we don't have rest of it. As a town, we formally condemn discrimination in all its forms, commit to fair, we commit to fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community. These are not hard words to think about, we've all, I've been there, you've been there, where we've seen personally discrimination. We've seen it on the newsreels as well. The town of Killington is and will continue to be a place where individuals can live freely and express their opinions. By the town of Killington Select Board on July 25th, if you were to sign it today or adopt it today, which I'd like to have a vote if we can. What we want to do is implement this, and adopt it means a formal approval by the municipality and its governing body. Implement means to enact the further, the furthest, furtherness of plans, policies, and programs, procedures, and training to get through all this around, yes?
I have a question on implement.
Yeah.
Um, and I disagree, uh, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. I agree with the overall policy. My question is this, it said, "Implement means the enactment and furtherance of plans, policies, programs, procedures, and relevant training which support and advance the intent and spirit of the declaration." Who decides what those policies and programs are?
Select board, right here, the town does.
And what if somebody decides they don't like that, that policy? Does that mean that we're going against this Declaration of Inclusion?
My context would be, the training that I was, that's mentioned in here, I assume is training for employees to treat everybody equal. That's what I'm, I'm assuming that's what it means.
Well, let's not sit here and adopt something and, and say, "I want to vote right now" and adopt something if you're assuming something.
I'm not assuming it, okay? I'll tell you what that's what it means.
Okay.
If you tend to have training because you have a department that needs to be trained.
But, but if you have a department that needs to be trained, so, you know, I, I'm gonna, I mean, I understand where this is coming from, and I understand that someone may say something that goes against what someone may think differently, is I think what you were getting at. So, once again, I come from a family of eight brothers and three sisters, and two of my brothers are foster brothers of color. So do not take what I say in any wrong way. But this is asking me to adopt and make procedures and policies and training, but yet, it's not enough information here of what the procedures, policies, and training is supposed to be. I am not against implementing a policy if I know what we're looking for.
Well, what we're looking for is, we're looking for, uh, select board members to be the leaders of this town, and to do the job of running the town the way they see fit.
Well, we already do that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
You know what you do, that's why I'm here. You're doing a good job.
But, so then, if we're doing a good job, then why do we need to put a policy of do a good job? I mean, I run for select board, and if I'm lucky enough, I guess, to get-
Unlucky.
To be appointed, I go to the town clerk and I have to raise my hand, and I swear to do the job to the best of my ability. And where I'm coming from is, is that I've seen this at the school, okay? And then, you know, it starts getting driven from one group that fights against another group. And I totally believe in, you know, people come to me and they say something, I like. I don't look at a, people say, "I believe that's a strong woman," and I'm like, I don't buy that. I don't believe in strong women. I believe in strong people. And the person I'm dealing with, it could be a male and it could be a female, and I'll tell you which one is stronger. It's not because they're female. It's because it's the stronger person. So I just.
Isn't that what inclusion's about, where you're going to include and not make any discrimination between male, female, color, sexual orientation?
What I'm getting at is that I already do that, okay? But I don't, I read this because this was one of the forms that I actually got on Friday instead of a lot of them yesterday or today.
You've had this over three weeks.
No, I have not.
None of you, the board has.
No.
No, I have not.
And I had sent it off to attorney, and I sent it to them.
I gave three copies to Steve, three, four weeks ago.
Okay, well, I'm telling you, I received this.
Friday.
Friday, late afternoon.
First we saw it, too.
Okay, so I have not had this for three weeks. So maybe you think I received it for three weeks, and then I could have given you input or asked questions to have a vote today. I'm not saying no vote, but I'm saying that we have questions because I received this late Friday afternoon, okay? And I have the same questions when it says a goal statement, and it says, "Adopt means formal approval by the municipality's governing body. Implement means the enactment and furtherance of plans, policies, programs, procedures, and relevant training which support." I would think that the next page would give me an example of a policy, a procedure, a program, plan, and what training is like. So I would hope that if we came to this, that if I did not show up to the training, I would not be looked at badly because I truthfully believe, once again, I don't believe in racism. I don't believe in sexist sexism. I don't believe in those things. I believe in everybody is equal. So, and that has gotten me into some trouble in this town because when I treat a female like a male, it's been used against me by saying certain things. But I would treat the male the same way if the same comment came out. So I just want to see more information on what the program is, the plan is. Because if you sit here and say, "It's us three," it's going to be hard for me to give input because I'm going to say, "Treat people like people."
That's what this says.
So you want me to write a policy that says, "Treat people like people," and that's the policy? I'm asking.
Well, when I say, when they say training, in a corporate world, which is different than here, they have training which is to show you the difference, every situation with prejudices, situations, whether it's involving women, or people of color, or different religions. And it's all right there in front of you on the screen on the computer training that they have. Now, are programs like that, if you think that there are sections of your town employees that need that, then they are available. But I, for me to tell you which one it is, I wouldn't be able to do that. I think that's something you'd have to decide yourself, what's good for our town. I will tell you that if you make this statement, expanding this town and making it bigger and better, this statement can only help you. It can't hurt you. We're writing the throes of it now.
Well, depends on which side you're on. And I don't, I'm not on either side. I'm swizzulent on this, okay? But there are two sides. There's three sides. There are the people that say, "I don't know why we're doing this because this is how I treat people."
Right.
It's equal. But then there's this side, and then there's this side. So, you know, what is racism is, and I don't want to, I'm not getting into that. We don't need to get into that. But when you do this and you set a policy, you're going to get into what is racism. I hope you would before you make a policy.
Sure. Maybe that's something that you need to discuss. Maybe you don't, you can't vote on it this month. Maybe next month you can vote on. I'll be back next month.
Okay.
I would like to talk to her before we sign anything that.
Pardon me?
Anything that we do over the Declaration, President of the Board. I think that, I think we should speak to council about.
Well, wait, wait. I gave it to Chuck.
That's why you didn't get it till now, because he gave it to the lawyer.
Yeah, I think we should speak to council, you know.
Yeah.
Chuck, did you have a talk with him?
I sent him, I sent it to him, and he sent me back a response and said he didn't see any legal obstacles at this point.
Thank you.
And in my case, I'm just looking for examples, if you will.
Sure.
And as I said, I do not disagree with this. I'm just looking for examples.
I don't think anyone in this room.
Well, when it comes to saying, "Implement plans and policies and programs," what are those plans and programs?
What's the penalty? Is it a $200 a day fine? I don't know. And that's not a joke. It's like, I have sat here for, I don't know, twelve years, sometimes on that side of the table and sometimes on this side of the table. And I've always said, "I don't believe in ordinances unless it's going to be enforced." So if an ordinance is put in place, it has to be able to be enforced. And how do you enforce it? Is there a penalty or is it, are we just like, I don't know?
Is this the same, do you think this is the same as an ordinance, where it's a Declaration of Inclusion, where you say, "This town treats everybody equal." That's what it says.
No, 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 no. The goal statement says, "To implement means the enactment and furtherance of plans, policies, programs, procedures." Then it also says somewhere else on here, "Ordinance." And this is the document that you're giving me, and it does say somewhere in here, I mean, a policy, a policy's just as strong as an ordinance.
I didn't see the ordinance part of it.
No, I didn't either.
Well, what's a policy? A policy is you're going to have to adopt a policy.
A statement of permission?
No, no, a policy is adopting, has to be enforced. And it has, in order to, if I wanted to put a policy in, Chuck, do I do it through zoning or through ordinance? A policy.
A policy, there's just town policies. Some would, it would not be through zoning, obviously, because it's not land-based, but it would be a policy that would be adopted by the town and become the rule of law for the staff, is really what it is.
So are we looking for this just to be the staff or for the town?
No, the staff.
Well, the staff are the ones implementing or acting on the policies and plans.
Wouldn't that be within our employee handbook?
Which, all of this is technically covered, just not in this specific language. I mean, you know, discrimination is not allowed.
But I believe we have, this is, I mean, we have a handbook, and in our handbook, you already have discrimination is not allowed.
Yes. And it's a list of it.
I think I might have, I might have taken the word "policy" as a, as an ordinance because if you're going to implement something, it has to be either through zoning or an ordinance.
And your ordinance would be for town-wide.
So in policy, I mean, can you please bring at the next meeting the employee handbook with the policies in there that specifically already state all this? And then I hope we can go out to the rest of the country and tell them, "Look, we didn't even need to do this because we already did it."
Yeah, I just, the goal statement is a little, Andy, is a little, there's nobody disagrees with it, I can tell you that. But I think we're setting ourselves up here for, you know, the enactment of plans, policies, programs, procedures. It's a broad brush painted across. What does that really mean?
Well, I really think that if you, if you have an issue, like why do you have this stuff in your handbook right now? Because there may have been issues in the past. You need to correct it, so you put something in. Now, maybe before all our time when that was put in. But what I'm saying is, is that you don't just go and do something unless you react to it as incident. Because you never thought of that would ever happen. And when it does happen, you say, "Okay, we got to put something in the handbook." That's the way it works.
Well, I will say that.
My experience.
The personnel policy was written by VLCT a long time ago as the recommended language for all of those things. So all the towns, I think, that are in VLCT that have put in personnel policies have adopted the same language.
Right.
So could we?
We'll bring that back at the next meeting.
Put this on a subsequent agenda and give us a chance to look at?
And if VLCT.
The policies we have and how they match up with what's here?
Yeah.
But the VLCT is, is.
Is one of your members.
Vermont League of Cities and Towns.
Right. It's one of your members.
Are partners in this.
Right.
So are you saying, once again, that this is for town employees?
I would say it would, why do it town employees?
May I ask a question?
So, so hold on, so, hold on. So Declaration of Inclusion, the second paragraph.
Yes.
States, "As a town, we formally condemn discrimination in all its forms. Commit to fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community." That's not the town employees. So now, so now, so now I'm being told that equal treatment of everyone in our community, and I, as a Select Board member, cannot control. Is it in the handbook for the employees, or is that paragraph mentioning that this is for the whole community?
Well, see, as I read this, "as a town" means the people that are employed by the town and elected by the town.
Right.
That they will act in accordance with, I'm not going to read the whole paragraph.
No, no, no.
Yeah. And again, just to, my thing is just, I'm looking for a little more on it, that's all.
No, Bob, Bob.
Procedures and type thing. And if Bob has something to add, just let us know that.
Is there any way to get him alive?
He's, he's.
Well, he's listening to us.
No, I mean, that paragraph thing should say, "The town," not "as a town," because "as a town" is everybody. "The town of Killington employees will formally condemn discrimination," or whatever, amongst.
That's just a title, yeah. It's not a title, no.
Let me suggest something. That if I, as a, as a, as a town citizen, somebody comes by and does something to me that is racial in nature somehow, or not racial, maybe it's short, fat, bald guys, okay? What do I do? I go to you guys and say, "Hey, listen."
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no.
Well, no, I'm going to a place.
You got to please.
That's not the selection's job.
That's not the selection's job, because that's another thing in here where it states something about the Select Board. The Select Board has taken on bigger roles. It's still the same roles as fifty years ago. It just selects, so basically where it's, where it says something else in here, it says that the Select Board has taken on bigger roles than just financials and whatever. But that's, that's all the Select Board does. I mean, we do not cop or police the. Other through zoning and policy. Yeah, you would go to the police.
That's where I would go.
If somebody called me a big whatever.
Yeah, we're town employees.
But even a town employee, the Select Board does it.
Wink is a town employee, isn't he?
Yes.
Yeah, that's who I go to.
Right. But it would be his department.
He's an officer of law that enforces.
Hold on a second. She's going to ask a question.
It says, "Intent of the Declaration of Inclusion." It says, "To indicate and reinforce the message to all visitors, residents, and those thinking about or planning to come." So it's not just the employees. So how do you plan on getting that message out? Is there going to be a sign or something like?
I don't know. I can tell you the town I grew up in was a town, a small village called Maranac in New York. That small town, when I was a kid growing up, was called the Friendly Village. It still is called the Friendly Village today. And that sends a message. So maybe there's a motto or a statement of, "Here's where you are in Killington. This is what we stand for." And maybe that's why we need to say it as well.
But this does clear it up. It's not just employees.
No, but that's where you start with employees, so that there's no harm caused by then to any one of our visitors.
Does the town have a mission?
Mission statement? I don't know that the town does. I don't think we have areas within the town that have a mission statement.
But now we're walking away from where this started, saying that this is supposed to be a policy, which, for employees, or in a handbook or whatever, that already is there, to, it is coming around to where I said, "This is for the whole community." And I agree that the whole community should be polite to everybody, but I come back to the point of, how do you enforce? And what do you do? And, and, you know, yeah, and Maranac is, you know, a great town or whatever, but, you know, it's not a hundred percent racism-free. Let's be honest.
No, I grew up in it. No, I can tell you, I saw it firsthand as a kid.
Yeah, what is racism? I mean, I, as a, as a Caucasian going into Chinatown, or as a Irishman going into Little Italy, or as going into Harlem, I could get the shit kicked out of me, and then it would be racism because I was in the wrong neighborhood.
Right.
I get it.
Yeah, that's what I was speaking of as well.
Yeah, I get it. You know, I really do get it. I'm just afraid that if I adopt this today, like you said, please have a vote today, I don't have enough information here. And it does, the background makes it sound like this is for us to vote and say, "Everybody in the town." How do I do that? I can't even get everybody to sign up for short-term rentals. I mean.
Let me ask Bob Harnish. Do you have anything to add?
Yes, and thank you, Andy, for presenting, and thank you, Chuck, and the board for listening and a useful discussion. That particular statement under our goal statement, I think probably should be reworded because I'm noting your concern, and I understand your concern. I think if I was to reword that statement where the one that you're having trouble with, it says, "Implement means the enactment of plans and policies," I would rework that to say, "Among other things, implement means the examination of town policies, hiring practices, police protocols, et cetera, for implicit bias."
So we're going to be meeting, we meet every two or three weeks. Could you make a new copy of this, Bob? Send it to us, and at the same time.
My question is, if all these other towns have signed this, why would we be signing something different?
Well, I'm not saying, I'm saying that, and then at the same time, we're saying to come back here with something. But I also would like to have a copy of our handbook that, you know, I received two and a half years ago that I specifically recall reading it and saying, "Well, this is common sense." And it talked about non-discrimination and other stuff in it.
I think it would be good to put them both side by side.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
And just study it from that perspective.
And we may find that we've already got our, our existing policies are already in agreement.
Right, and we may be making a statement.
That's what I'm saying, is I want to make sure that, and check that our existing policies are already in agreement with what this is saying here.
And if they're not, then we may have to update our existing policies.
Yeah, I mean, we might have to tweak the policy.
Right. That's where I'm coming from. I'm not saying shut this thing.
No.
But I'm just saying that I believe, as I, I know I got one two years ago. It's trash boy.
So would, would you be able to do that by the next meeting?
I would, let's go, let's go out to the, this is, this is July, what, twenty?
Twenty-five. We got eleven and twenty, no, is that right? It's eleven and twenty-five.
Eleven and twenty-five. Can we just move to eleven twenty-fifth?
This is August ninth, so it would be like the twenty-third or something.
Yeah, make it the seventh and the twenty-fifth.
Make it the second meeting in August. That will give Bob some time to. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, if other places have signed on for this, that's up to Bob to go out and maybe feel that he should be making some adjustments to everybody else, correct? Bob, that's your job?
It may be more of an explanation than rewording it.
Right.
That's all.
It could be that Bob.
Yeah.
Well, he's saying he would reword that.
And he knows our questions.
Listen, I appreciate you guys taking the time to do this, to listen to me.
Always.
Okay.
No, I just.
So we will have it on that agenda. It will not be the next meeting. It will be a month from now. Okay?
Yeah, be the second meeting in August. And you, and you would understand, Andy, too, and Bob would also understand that if this town was against this or the board was against it, we wouldn't be having this open conversation.
I know that. I know where I am. I know this.
This conversation would be from where this is supposed to be driving to, against people, it would be.
Listen, I lived here, and I will not move.
Okay. But Bob, thank you for your input on this, and. And I'm guessing you heard that it'll be at the second meeting in August, where this will come back up again.
Yes, I did. And, and thank you for a very worthwhile discussion.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Okay.
Good night.
Oh, good night. No one said that before.
All right. I, I, just a caveat, I work with Bob on Habitat, and he wrote you in.
Yep. You didn't write this piece.
Uh, no.
I know that.
Okay.
Better with your comments than I know you are.
We're moving on to sewer connection permit. This is specifically for Holly George. Is this the one that is down next to the green fire?
Yes, this is the, the old boutique building. They are renovating that project. They are turning what was originally a ski shop and then the boutique into some residential units, and a laundry and an office area related to Airbnbs or short-term rentals, for lack of a better word. And there's been a request, based on the ownership of, of that property, there's two ERUs for the Route 4 sewer, the town-owned sewer, that were included in that purchase. Based on the calculations and the contract with Alpine Pipeline, in order to have the six bedrooms, three, three washing machines, and the office space, they will need a total of six ERUs. They're requesting to purchase four new ERUs. Currently, their building is on septic, it's never been connected to the sewer before. They did not have, the, that's a 1965 wastewater system, and no wastewater, no wastewater permit's ever been issued from the state. We did the calculation and sent the information to them, as, as did the Alpine Pipeline. They've already purchased the four additional units from the Alpine Pipeline, so they need to purchase four from the town. And upon receipt of a wastewater permit from the state, they will then have to pay their connection fee, which is $1,500 per the ordinance, and have purchased the four ERUs prior to a permit to, to install. At this time, we're asking to permit them to purchase the four additional ERUs. This is the first time in my time here, which is over 10 years, and for several years before that, anybody has purchased additional units.
Usually get them back.
Usually, yeah, they haven't been going in that direction for a while. So this is very good news, I think, for the town and for the sewer system. So looking for permission to allow the purchase of four additional ERUs in connection to the sewer upon receipt of a wastewater permit from the state.
So I'll make a motion to move forward, allowing the town manager as the Route 4 sewer. Move forward with the Holly George request. And then we get a discussion. My discussion is, is that, is it true that, on one hand, you're saying that they need to buy it upon getting a wastewater permit from the state of Vermont?
Yes.
Okay, but in our ordinance, doesn't it say that you cannot buy just one side, you have to have both sides?
Yeah, they do have to buy the four units either way, or they have to sell back the ones that they bought.
No, 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 no. So let's back up.
Okay.
If I buy, I cannot, I, I cannot really buy one Killington one, Route 4.
Correct.
Without buying the other one.
Yes.
So there's no way of owning a half a share or epoxy A of a two-part epoxy.
Correct.
So if somebody already owns six in Rutland, they should own six in Killington.
Correct.
For Route 4.
That's correct.
Or hand in the four.
The other four, right.
So that's number one. I mean, I would think.
Well, the assumption is, because she went out and bought those units before we had finished all of our discussions, the wastewater permit has been applied for. If it's granted, she would have to buy the other four, otherwise she's going to have to sell the other four back.
Isn't that a little, like, why would you allow someone to go buy them in Rutland first without buying them in Killington and make it one transaction?
We did not, like, we were not in contact. I didn't know she had bought them. They were, we said, there's two sets of ERUs you have to buy.
Aren't they smart enough to do the same thing?
They should not have sold them.
Okay.
Okay, the reality is, is we were supposed to do this simultaneously.
Should be one transaction.
And he just said, he thought we were all set, and he told her he had to have both, and they just sold them, and that, they should have never been issued.
So I think what we should do is, in our sewer policy or ordinance or whatever it is, is that it cannot be bought from Rutland.
That we.
It won't have to be bought from here.
We buy the other.
So who's in Frank?
Frank Hill.
Frank Hill. So any future purchases, the, the two parts have to be paid for by the town, to the town of Killington.
Right.
And then the town of Killington then will hand the money over to the Rutland for their side. So we don't have this, because I think this was the issue that we were running into. Certain people only have one half for the last 15, 20 years.
The surprise to me is, is we just spent the last better part of a year and a half closing all of those holes.
Right.
You know, where we had, you know, we had, they had two of ours and none of theirs, they had a couple of theirs and none of ours. We've, we've been closing all of those loops, and I think we're down to the last one or two.
Right. But now we're starting over.
Yeah, and that's what we gotta, we gotta prevent this from happening again. So we, we'll just need to come to a formal agreement with them, that the town will, will issue the shares.
This is nothing to do on Holly's fault.
Correct. No, this is not, no, it just, it just was the nature of, you know, because in Holly's defense, she thought, when she was talking Alpine Pipeline, that's all she ever had to do.
It is confusing.
Right, and they were confused, and there's, so that's why we gotta make this less confusing.
Right. So we should make it that Rutland understands that all sewer on the Route 4, Alpine, whatever it's called, will be, any units in Killington, both parts will be paid for in Killington, and then Killington will hand over the share to Rutland for that part.
Right, but since.
This is already done, you know, but we have to use her as an example, because it perfectly works for how to fix it. It's not.
And a certificate of occupancy is never granted until all this is paid for on all sides.
Correct.
Oh, a certificate of occupancy is not until, I mean, this, I mean, in this case here, you know, she needs a wastewater permit.
Right. She, right now, they.
Right now, this is just a site plan, and, and, and Holly and Dan were both in, husband and wife, and they filed for a site plan, and I'm putting them on the agenda for DRB for August 25th. And, you know, it's, everything fits into this, and then she needs to file a zoning application, which should be good, but in order to get zoning, you need a wastewater permit. So.
Okay.
So.
So we can allow this contingent on the state granting a permit? The state permit comes first.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want there to be any confusion that she pays for them and then connections allowed.
Yeah, we don't want to take back and forth, but I'm just saying, in the future.
Yeah, no, we need to be doing the whole thing.
So you're waiting until you have a permit in hand?
Correct. I'm not gonna, we're not gonna issue, here's the contract for them to sign that we can then.
So the motion on the floor was what you had said, and that, just repeat what you had said.
I was looking for approval to allow the purchase of four ERUs from the Route 4 sewer, contingent upon receipt of the wastewater permit from the state, and then subsequent to that, of the $1,500 connection permit and the requirements set herein in the, in the ordinance.
And the, and the connection cannot happen until there's a wastewater permit?
Yes.
So wastewater permit first, purchase the four units, $1,500 for connection fee, and then they have somebody come in and connect it? Who oversees the connection?
We would have our engineer review whether they're during the construction or afterwards, they're going to have to inspect the connection.
So that's the motion that, I first, and Chris second, and.
All in favor?
Aye. Just make sure everything is clearly written.
Yep.
Of the steps.
Yep.
In our next meeting, we may want to consider a draft of what you were just talking about to go out to Rutland.
And you need to talk to Frank Hill.
Well, I'll talk to Frank, and we'll, and we'll come up with some joint language that we both sign, saying this is how we're going to proceed early.
Something on our end that says, how our end of it is going to work, in terms of, they have to have the permit before they can buy the stuff.
Well, the other thing is, is, you know, because it's a two-part process even with them, because we will need to make a request to Frank, say, "We want to buy three units." He has to approve it before then I can go sell the three.
Yep.
So it's a, it's a two-part process.
That makes it even sillier how someone bought one side and not our side, but we'll go from there.
Okay.
We're up to number 10 now.
911 coordinator appointment?
Yes, we currently, Chuck LaFey is still our 911 coordinator. Currently.
Doing a great job.
Darrell is doing some of the, the middle work and the question, you know, we just, he's our current town planner, and we would just appoint him to be the 911 coordinator.
This is a lot, you know, Darrell's come in for planning. This is more on, and there's a lot of conversations on the planning stuff, so I'll make a motion to Darrell, be appointed as the 911 coordinator for the town of Killington.
Second.
Last name and since its appointment? Darrell Arminius.
So Darrell.
I was just saying it as an appointment, you know, this whole name.
Right, so Darrell Arminius, as a 911.
All in favor?
Aye. So the first thing that he's going to have to get on is Base Camp Road at the bottom of Route 4, when it went to more than three lots, the Mike Miller came in to change the name to Base Camp Drive. It's still being recognized as Route 4, so with those places in the back, the address for the chamber, the address for Base Camp, has to be changed, because there are emails from the 911 state office saying, "It has to be changed."
Okay.
Okay. And the CAMA software, this is a.
This is the.
Reappraisal?
Yeah, this is the land record software that the listers use for keeping all of the data related to each property. We put out an RFP about a month ago and got two proposals. I'm assuming, I don't know if we want to go through those in the public, or if you want to do that in executive session at some point, but we did receive proposals, and we will be making a selection. And then we have some updates and things like that to do on our CAMA software.
We can do that in executive session.
It's contracts.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so I just, it's in there, and we just bring it up.
And then we come out and decide.
Okay. So we have 2023 short-term rental schedule?
Yeah, based on the conversations we had, we're coming up to the November 1st is the new permit date, and they start re-upping in September. They can start to re-up their short-term rentals for the budget this year. We had made some changes to the, to the fee schedule, have included the fee that we discussed. This is, you know, draft, or there can be changes made, but when we were doing the budget, we were working based on the two bedrooms at 400, the three bedrooms at 450, and the four more is the 500.
So what I'd like to do on this thing here is, for our next meeting, I mean, I know we get to say, but nobody really else has seen this. So, I mean, I'm going to make a motion, no matter what, at the next meeting, to accept this, but you have to give people a chance to speak when you're going to make an increase to their cost, but I just want to say that these prices are still, you were involved, they're still 50, more than 50% less than what we were told when we first signed on.
What is the current rate for?
150, 200, 250.
Okay.
So, so just to be fair, because we know there's a lot of short-term rentals in our town, there are a lot of local people, if we can put this up on the agenda and have these prices posted, and also, as Chris just asked, put down the new fees and the previous, and the current, and the current fee. So we take our beating in the meeting, and we go from there.
We have some transfer station fees?
Yeah, we, talking with Jay, Jay came up with some possibilities for some revisions to the fees. One of the drivers of it is basically the compost. The compost, you know, does have an expense, it's not recyclable in the context that other things are, but we talked about charging $3 for 10 three-gallon bags, $3 for six five-gallon bags, to kind of cover some of the costs related to it. And then there was just some language changes and some, some odds and ends. It used to always say, for the $9 each, you have the bike tires in there, it's only like $3 we should probably get for the bike tires, and adding motorcycle tires to that same light item for the under 17-inch. $18 each for 18-inch tires and up. Adding the, the name Outdoor Grills to that process, and dehumidifiers to the metal bulky items. And then identifying, because we had, at the time we did this update, the last time we weren't allowed, we weren't doing any purchases of the ticker, stickers and the tickets at the transfer station, and then adding, they can buy them at the transfer stations or in those hours, and the one statement that says, "All electronics must go to the Rutland County Solid Waste Facility."
So Jay, on the tires, are you thinking of getting a separate dumpster, so that way they can put it in? Because that becomes a pain, you know it.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's not that many right now, and I was just thinking of storing them until we put them in the dumpster every dump day.
Right.
I mean, if we were collecting, you know, if we're collecting 100 or something between, between bulky days, that'd be a problem, but it all just stays manageable.
It's just the bottom piece.
The worst thing that would happen is we might have to load a bunch of them on a truck and take them around one day.
Yeah.
Be the worst thing.
I think so.
No, it was like, they used to take, on the bulky days when I was doing it, they would just store them somewhere, and then the dumpster would come for the tires, and then I'd be sitting there, or, or the front loader coming in. And I'd swing open, then I got the tire one to come, swing open the door, and make the people put in, it's, it gets the pain out of it.
So since bulky day, I've collected eight tires.
Right.
So it's not a huge storage problem, if we got to leave one, except the worst thing that would happen is we take, I take the pickup truck one day and take two hours and take them around one.
It just gets tough if the price gets too high, and then all of a sudden, then we start picking them out of ditches and.
Right, that's like, that's why I wanted to go from 30 down. It's, and a bike tire for $9, people, what they're doing is they're putting them in their garbage and throwing them in the landfill, so if it's $3 and it's affordable, then they will bring them in.
So the only thing, like, so the non-metal bulky items to be placed in open containers, and then it talks about tires, and that's what was getting me. So you don't want people reading this and getting it thrown in, because then, you know it, sometimes your back's turning, and then people just.
You're right, yeah.
So let's just make, change and make a statement there, "The tires shall not be put in the containers, okay?"
Yeah.
Must, must be attended or something for tires.
Yeah.
Okay? So you don't want to be fishing from out of it, then Cassella will be ripping all over us. You know, as far as the, I can tell you, as far as the compost bags, I believe Bridgewater and Rutland, they charge, and they've been charging since the last two years. And I think Bridgewater charges $3 a bag, or, I think it's $3 per bag.
So I call the.
I'm, I'm agreeing with this price here, just to recoup something.
Can I just ask on the composting what the pricing was?
It was $3 for 10.
Three-gallon bags.
Three-gallon bags, and the six five-gallon bags for $3.
So.
So it was meant to just be, you know, if people wanted to get them, that would be a punch on the card, as opposed to, you know, bringing $3 with them or whatever it was geared to just be a punch on the card.
Right. So, so they get a punch on the card, and they get 10 or 5, depending on what size they want.
How do you keep the bears out?
So we did have bears. Early this year, they got into the compost, and I went down and bought two large door haves with two heavy-duty clips, and I put on the doors. So far.
They're not that hungry.
Nothing's reoccurred. I'm assuming someday I'll go down there and the doors will be laying on the.
Yeah.
And then I'll be back to tell you, you really need to spend some money, but.
[laughing]
But so far. But so far they haven't been back to bother.
If, for when it happens, an electric fence won't do it. Or these.
What are these?
Less-lethal projectiles for a 12-gauge.
Oh, okay.
Not land or metal, it's plastic.
Tough to walk out of a restaurant and just fire at something in your parking lot.
They use them overseas.
Or the electric fence that a customer might grab on the way.
They use them in Ireland too, rubber bolts.
Yep.
Yeah.
I guess my only concern with electric fence would be liability.
Yeah.
I protect my yards with.
I know, like liability.
Like for like, like a one for like cattle or that type of like.
For chickens and rabbits, actually.
Okay, yeah, but you could use one that would, for horses or.
Well, it was funny because you sat through, we had that one time UVM come down, the college students and the professor and stuff. And they did a thing on bears and it was even just putting barbed wire around and then putting bacon wrapped around the barbed wire. So the first time they go to get it, they, no, it's, they, this was them and they're all for the bears. And it doesn't cut them, but they learn and then they don't go back to that area.
I do that, I hang bacon on my B yard fences. They get zapped once and they will not touch the bacon on any other fence anywhere else. It only takes once to teach a bear to do or not do something or to avoid.
For the most humans, that's amazing.
Or tradable.
So I'm good with all of this here, I just make sure, make that one change that the tires don't go in.
Yeah.
And.
I have a question about electronics, because everything now goes to Rutland, is that right?
Yes.
Electronics, so that's computers, phones, printers, everything.
Yes.
Does the town, because the library has a lot of old electronics that need to go. Do you, is the town doing anything?
Yeah, I mean, that's basically even the Peter and we've taken them down to Gleason Road, although.
Or I can do it.
Well, if you would like, have at it.
Okay.
You know, if the whole town got together, Jeff had done a run with electronics about two months ago, three months ago. Yeah, because there was some leftover and you got a Gaylord and a pallet and then put it on the flatbed and took it down and they take a front loader. So if the town has a bunch of stuff, I would just get a Gaylord from Rutland. And then that's the box, for those that don't know what that is. And a pallet and open it up and then just start dumping the stuff.
We may even have an original apple.
Yeah. Well, you don't want to throw that in the recycle because you have an original.
It would be worth a little money.
You might get your pavilion.
He says, sorry.
I have to have a go through the permitting process, but.
So I make a motion to approve the fee change for the transfer station.
Second.
With those changes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wouldn't that be a piece of luck?
And town financials.
Yeah, basically for both the town and the golf financials, we are looking at year-end numbers. But they are, I'm gonna call them draft, only because we have been doing a lot of adjusting and redistributing to get it cleaned up. Our auditor's coming on August 8th, so we will be making some more changes. First one that I want to talk about is the FEMA expense we had just over a year ago. It was the $51,000 that we had to pay back. In my conversations with Bill Hall, we just, what we're going to do is write that off in the restricted fund for the bridges, because that was money that went to the bridge fund and came back out. And then in order to repopulate that number for this year, we would add the $51,000 to what we were planning to put in that. And we would make that number back to being whole. So I think it's a, it's a good way to put that one item in the bed and allow us to close one of those out.
So when we stick to that, and since my wife was a CPA, they basically make their suggestions. And then the actual person doing the financing, and I think Mark is here, is that working for you, Mark?
Sorry, I was looking at it before.
Okay, the explanation on the 51,000?
But we.
The FEMA payment.
Right, going through the.
Restricted fund.
Going through the restricted funds of the bridges and culverts or whatever?
Yeah, it's actually the bitch main, bitch main, how do you say that?
No, it's the bridge and large culverts.
Bridge and large culverts, okay.
Well, we, actually in this particular case, this was not from our auditor. Mark and I had discussed this and made this plan and called and just made sure it didn't cause any problems. So we, but he.
I thought I heard you say you did.
Well, I had a conversation with him, but it wasn't, we weren't calling for.
So your business, that's what I'm saying.
It needs to be done, it needs to be done to clear that account, so the fund is zero going forward.
Okay.
Okay. The one thing we did modify since the last time we looked at these numbers, when the select board had some questions about where we were with the electrical budgets because of the way the solar was. The one thing to keep in mind, and this will also, a lot of this will tie to the same conversation we have about the phone. Since we, this was the first year we completed with the solar, we had not done the allocations per which meter these things, that the generation was going to. The entire electrical generation was being posted in one spot, because that was what we were paying to Sun Wealth. It has now been divvied up, because if you talk about the solar array on the town garage, 40% of the power generated there goes to the golf course electric. 20, and I don't remember which one, one's 20 and one's 30, the library and town hall get allocations to those. And this, none of those allocations had been made at that time, so all of those.
This is where I have a problem. The golf course is supposed to be on its own. The town people were asked to bond a bond for solar panels. And it's supposed to come off of the town's electricity bill. The golf course is supposed to be paying on its own. So if they're getting 40% of power from a bond that the taxpayers are paying, then we should be billing the golf course.
And we did. As of 6/30/22, the golf course was billed $8,600 and change. And that covered fiscal year '22 for the entire year. 40% of the entire garage solar rebuilt. And then we made a secondary adjustment to give the library their portion and the town office their portion. So it's all been allocated as a.
The library and whatever, town hall is not getting billed, because that's a separate.
Yeah, it's the general, that's the regular general fund, but the golf course had to actually reimburse the town for what it generated for them.
And it did. So I accrued it at 6/30/22. And then on July 18th, I think, the actual cash was transferred from golf course checking to town checking.
Okay, because I didn't like the way it was.
8,658 in coins.
Right, okay. So going forward, every year they will get the bill?
Ideally, it's gonna go through a monthly allocation when the bill comes in. There'll be a formula to designate how much goes to each entity and it will happen more systematically.
Okay.
Worst case, yeah, it's happening, it's gonna happen once a year, but I think we can be better than that.
Okay, so now the library runs on a, she laughed, but the library runs on a separate budget, correct?
Correct.
So.
But they're still general fund.
But it's still general fund, so.
It's not a separate billing, it's basically just, that's just an accounting.
Okay.
And we will be working, like, we'll want to look at it probably in about three months, when we see this first three months of allocations, I mean, of generation, because for most of this past year, the other two solar arrays were not on. So we're gonna see if we want to adjust the percentages as to where those things are going. The allocations are basically something that we, that Sun Wealth, we turn in the Sun Wealth, they send it to GMP and then they apply it to the meters, because it's all by meter number.
So Mark, how do you see solar being generated in a report to the board on a monthly or a quarterly basis? And how do you see showing us that it may have cost the town X, but then they got X from the golf course to offset part of that?
Green Mountain Power has a internet-based type report. And from what I tried to, to work with it, it's a little, it's a little chaotic. So my hope would be, if you spend the time on it, you can do that math. And that's all it is, is math. And, but that's, so Green Mountain Power, one of the challenges is that the solar company will do it on one basis. On a monthly basis, this is the generation, here's our rates, here's your bill, please pay. Green Mountain will have it on their billing cycle and the two will not be identical. I can guarantee that. So over a period of time, what you're looking for is a reasonableness within those rates. So that is the, going forward, that's what we want to be able to do, is dump the information from Green Mountain Power, bet the data and then compare that to what Sun Wealth is saying the data is. The biggest thing is on any allocation, an allocation is an allocation. How you make it real, you verify the data. And so that'll be the, that's the challenge, it's just, it takes time.
So with the challenge that I'm talking about is, let's say you have a $10,000 month bill, okay? And 40% of, the 10,000 is created by X and 40% of that is going to.
To Y.
The golf, the golf course.
Yep.
How are we gonna see on our plan, because if you just say 10,000, you know, and then all of a sudden it goes to the golf course, it's a different budget, that the town is actually getting that $4,000 out of there?
Well, they will through the allocation, once we can confirm the allocation is real. Currently, I think the 8,600 was high. And I think that the distribution of the allocation needs to be adjusted. We don't have a lot of data points to really make that determination yet. We have one year of production that one group has given us versus a Green Mountain Power internet-based program that was fairly difficult to download and they're stated in different rates there. It was, yeah, a little ugly, so.
So are we getting 10%?
10%, we pay 10% less than the charged rate by GMP for everything we generate.
So if we build the golf course $8,600, that's the savings that we got, which would be 86,000?
You're paying 8,600, 8,600, you probably would have technically saved $800 on the electric you would have done then, ish, 900.
Okay. So they're paying, they're paying the full minus the 10%.
Well, no, the 10% is taken off before we make our payment, so the allocation's after the 10%.
Yeah, so everybody's on a net debt, yeah, okay.
And on that other side, and we can talk about this more, when you talk about like.
I do have an issue with that, because once again, it's with the town and the town is supposed to be getting the savings. And the golf course is supposed to be running on its own. So the golf course is saving $800, but that's a whole different.
Well, and we can have that conversation.
They should be billed the full price and the townspeople should be getting the savings.
Okay, because the, what's happening also.
Up on you for that?
Uh, I, maybe I disagree, because the golf course is owned by the town. So it's Peter and Paul, they're all on the same pocketbook. They're an enterprise fund, for sure. So they have different accounting requirements, but the golf course is part of the town.
And I.
It'd be good to understand.
Well, the issue, the issue why we ended up, because when we were doing the overall calculation as to how much solar we could use, the golf course is the single biggest user of electricity in the town. Okay, so one of the things was is when we put these two arrays together, if we took that 40% out and put it to the other ones, we would have a lot of excess. You know what I mean? So we, this is something we're gonna have to work on, you know, how we do the allocation and how we make that adjustment.
So on the town side.
Right.
Is this solar, this solar system here and the one at the garage, okay, paying 100%? Is it, is it 100% going to the town and we actually have 40% extra?
No.
Okay, so if you're, if it's made, the 100% goes to the town's savings.
Right.
And if there's anything above that, then gets billed to the golf course.
Well, we'd be able to review that with the reallocation. We could say, well, this one could take some more, this one can take some more, this one can take some more. And then we make that, we can make that adjustment so that they're getting the last bit of it.
Is there any way we could put this on a nice spreadsheet so we could really understand?
I just got, actually.
And so understand what the consumption is on each property, what everything's generating and where the hell it's going.
Because I did get all of the allocation reports from Sun Wealth. We broke those all down.
How much?
It's in kilowatt-hours, I can do that and then we gotta look.
And will it show which panels are producing as well?
It's, it's.
Like the one at the town garage, at the town office?
The town office is not in Sun Wealth, that's, that's just us and GMP, that will be just on the bill. You know, those, those are different. These two are the two PPAs, that's the one on the top of the town garage and the one on top on here.
So if the town uses how much electricity is what I want to see, just the town, not the golf course.
Right.
How much electricity does the town use? And how much is the solar panels on this roof and the garage producing? And if it's 110%, then 100% savings goes to the town general fund budget and the other 10% excess goes over to the golf course at that cost. If it's only producing 50% of the town's total, the town gets that full 50% of the savings.
We're doing right now, including, when you say total town, including the golf course.
No, 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 no.
I understand what you're saying, but I just want to tell you what I know today. What I know today is if you include the golf course and the town, these two solar arrays are doing 85% of the town's power. Okay, I have to, we have, this is the first time we've had all the allocations for the year. We gotta see if, how much more we can shift back.
But like Mark says, it's only math.
Right.
So when someone tells me between the town and the golf course, these solar panels are producing 85% of the power. Well, okay, great, but if it's still not enough to cover 100% of the town side, this golf course was, the problem was, was to get it, so I understand. You're looking at it as, it's still coming out of the town, but that is not the intent of an enterprise fund. Because then why don't we just treat this fire district as the same and just say, it's not, it's supposed to be, it pays for itself. We have taken the position that we cannot have, that golf course cannot pay its bonds. And currently, it really even can't pay the capital that we're putting 100 grand. So we've asked the voters to approve a PPA agreement or whatever, okay, for these two solar panels to save the town money. So let's, I want to make sure that the town's 100% of electricity is taken care of first. And then anything after that is given over.
You just want a clean situation so that we can really understand where the golf course is at.
Right.
And so that, and.
And where the town, how much is the town? If the town is, if the town, if you're telling me that 85% is including 100% of the town, okay.
And that's not including.
My argument's over.
Right, well, and that doesn't include the other two arrays, which we don't have enough historical data yet on.
Let's not even talk about the other two arrays, let's just stick to this one and the.
That's the, that's the public safety building generation per month, okay? And we have to be able to tell you based on the, on the meter, on the meters that we have.
So from 7.1 to 6.1, okay, there's 127,291 kilowatt-hours. What does the town, not the golf course, use?
Right, and that's what, we have to put that on this chart for you.
Right.
Okay, and that's, that's, this is the starting point that I just got last week.
For all the, all the buildings.
Yeah.
This is what the library uses.
Yeah.
And that way we just have a rough idea.
And if it comes out to be, you know, the town is using 85,000 kilowatt-hours, then there's the other 40%. 85,000 is probably, 85,000 is probably 85% of the 127,000 or whatever, okay?
Because it's 50, 40.
So I think Jay has it up in the back, Steve.
So both those, those, both those array have been, have gone through wear?
Yeah.
Actually producing?
Yes.
So you have that, okay.
Yes.
You have that data?
Yeah. If you look, you can see it on there.
So it should stay, my solar stays pretty consistent.
See, this, in January, we had 172 kilowatt-hours.
Shovel.
So, I mean, mine stays pretty consistent from month to month, year to year, I mean, within, you know, within reason.
Yeah.
Yeah, at this point, yeah, we should be doing 127,000 per year.
Right.
We just need, like Chris is asking for these buildings.
Yep. Yep.
And then a separate for what the golf course is.
Yep. Okay. So, basically, all of those allocations were spread out in, in the, uh, in the report to, to give a better indication. What I did do is, I looked at the twenty-nineteen, or twenty-twenty numbers for actuals, and when you compare actuals to what we've now changed for the dispersment, the electric was working just about the same as it's been cost-wise for the last couple of years. Actually, I had it at five hundred dollars less, but, you know, we're, we're doing very similar on the, on the electrical usage. The other issue was the phones. Um, I think there's been, we, the same exercise has to be undertaken for the phones to spread that out. When you look at the money that's all been charged to the town hall for the twenty-seven thousand dollars for, uh, NHC, that is for five locations. It includes five locations of internet, um, and a hundred and seventy-nine dollars per. Uh, each phone costs about twenty dollars a month, plus the taxes and fees. And basically, when I did the math for each of the facilities, once we do the, the reallocation, if you took the town garage and town hall, which were always the phones put together, in two thousand and nineteen, we had about a fourteen thousand dollar bill. Um, the two together in this would be eleven thousand, one ninety-six. Um, the library, uh, was about eighteen hundred and twenty-four dollars. Um, the public safety building, which was never part of the bills in the past, is seven thousand, three sixty-eight, um, for the total year. Um, it has sixteen phones, I, and it's static IP addresses and all the other stuff.
That is, that is not including internet, just phones?
That's, no, the seven thousand includes internet. They had a hundred and seventy-nine a month, excuse me?
This building has sixteen phones?
Yes.
Why?
Because of where the offices are and where they're set up and the way the desks are, and that was-
You guys designed this building, and every single person has a phone in their room. Even if there's not a person in their room, there's a phone there.
So sixteen hundred and fifty-four dollars is the golf course is also, so all of these things are still in the one-
I think that comes to a better question of, of how many of these rooms are actually being used? And should you really be paying twenty dollars, two-hundred-and-forty dollars a mon- a year for maybe six or seven or eight phones that are not being used?
And, and we can have that conversation. The other thing that, that was included in that, uh, number, um, the cell phone stipends were all put into one location this year. They have to be reallocated to each of the departments. That's about six thousand dollars. Um, we also paid, uh, what's the name? APC services, who were the ones who did the install. We had to completely rewire town hall. That was all included in that as well last year. We did that last June and July.
How much is that a year, and for how many years?
That was for, that was, that's once. The APC?
Yeah.
One time.
How much was it?
Uh, it was like four thousand dollars. So, there's a bunch of things that are gonna be reallocated and spread out, and then, you know, conversations like Jim's having, like, how many phones do we really need? And we can delete some if we have to.
I mean, how many phone, you're saying it's how many phones in here?
Sixteen. That's including the police, fire, in the garage area.
With internet and phone service, what are we paying here in line?
Six thirty-one? Six fourteen, sorry.
I mean, I, I know, like, with VTEL, somebody that has twelve phones of the VTEL, VoIP, whatever you wanna call it, and pretty the fastest internet, and they're paying three hundred dollars a month.
We asked, uh, VTEL to give us the prices, and they didn't do a quote. We had another company, First Choice, and this was the one that did the best of who we got proposals for. Um, but there are little odds and ends-
So we figured out why we're being billed by VTEL?
VTEL did not have all of the things deleted. They still had their internet up. They were, they were supposed to remove the bunch of the processes, and they are all removed, except for six numbers. Currently, there's six numbers that are currently in use, simply forwarding until we can get them ported. And one of those six numbers is in a fire, is in a fire panel that we have to actually change the fire panel to change the type of phone setup there.
That should be the easiest, cause it doesn't matter. Nobody's calling that phone number. That's a number going out.
We can't shut it off. That one number, I can't shut off until I-
We've been talking about a phone bill now for about three months. I mean, we shouldn't be able to shut that, we should be able to get a new phone number. I could do it tomorrow. I mean, it's just-
The issue isn't a new phone number. It won't take voiceover IP.
It's a fire panel is the problem.
It's a fire panel will only take the old-style dialers until we upgrade the panel, which we can't get parts. That's, that, both the library and town garage. Both of those are still holding copper numbers.
But they just have to, you have to get the fire panel.
I gotta get the panel upgraded. Dialer, took us three months to get the dialer to update, cause we upgraded the one in town hall. It took three months to get it, so. So those are, those are the only last remaining things that have to be cleaned up, and they will be cleaned up shortly.
So, how long was VTEL charging us eleven hundred dollars a month, and what should they have been charging us?
They should've been charging us around two hundred dollars a month, and they charged us-
Eleven hundred dollars a month?
Eleven hundred, for about, almost a year.
Okay. So, when we, we called them up, when we wanted them off?
Right.
So, for twelve months, we've been paying nine hundred dollars, nine hundred dollars too much. Where's the, where's the credit coming back?
I'm working on that. I'm having a conversation. I don't know how it'll do, but I am working on that.
So, if we don't get the ten thousand and something dollars back, and that's where VTEL stands, what's stopping us that we still need those phones, and why can't we get it over to this other service?
All I gotta do is get, I gotta get NHC to try, to go to, again, to get the ported numbers over. That, the issue is, I can't get the, I have to, they have to do the agreement to get the numbers over.
NEC does?
NHC.
NHC. So-
They, I mean, they, they have to make the port agreement.
Somebody hasn't done something here to port the numbers.
I'm not looking to point fingers, but I, I, it was supposed to be done as part of the install. They were supposed to have made the, the thing done, the people that did the installation.
So somebody needs to make us whole.
That's correct. And I will, we'll figure out who that's gonna be.
So, this, this, and, and this is just one of those stupid, this conversation came up, cause I'm freaking in there as the administrator, and the phone lines went down that one day.
And you talked to NEC?
No, it was phones down. Phones were down. Everybody's looking around. I was like, give me the bill to who we're paying. I called people up, and I looked at a bill, and I'm like, this is ridiculous of what we're paying.
Well, what we're paying here-
So, but what I'm getting at is, is that, it's like, is there anything else in this budget that someone's billing us that should not be here?
I have not seen anything. This is, like I said, this is first year for this as well. We did a complete transport. We rewired all the buildings. We had to do a bunch of different work, and this did not get picked up in the beginning. We don't, I-
Do we have a record of making the phone call to VTEL and telling them to cancel out these, or an email telling them to cancel out?
It was not an email. It was a phone call, and I'm going, I'm trying to find that out. I don't, I don't have a record of it.
Okay. So in the future, if we just disband something in this day and time?
We need to send emails.
We need to send some type of email or whatever. So Mark, you're the one paying the bills. Do we have another bill in front of us two or three months later for eleven hundred dollars from VTEL?
I don't, I, that's, I don't pay the bills, Jim. It's typically processed by Mona.
Okay, but you're Mona.
This was, this was all-
You're not probably Mona under the bus, but this board-
I don't process bills all day.
I don't, Chris was not on it, but Steve, you, Chuck, and I said to hire a finance director, and the finance director is supposed to be the finance director, and Mona is supposed to be working underneath you. This was to remove financing to free you up on managing around. So, are we not at that point where you're doing the finance and paying the bills and overseeing everything?
That'd be fair to say.
Chet?
It'd be, and that's where we are now.
So I just asked him if we have a bill from VTEL for this month for eleven hundred dollars, and he said he doesn't pay the bills.
Well, I know that the disconnection didn't happen until July. There will be probably one more bill, and then it'll be off, and I'm gonna be trying to get the other one back.
No, 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 no. Forget about VTEL billing you.
Okay.
Is it still you and Mona? Mona is, I, I hate to say it, and that doesn't even matter, if, even if you weren't, if you weren't here, I'd still be saying, let's forget about Mona, okay? She has a manager above her. It's either you or him. She does not sign the check.
Right.
Okay? So it's you and LaCresca that sign checks, but it's supposed to go through the finance director and his people below him. And that's what I thought we were setting up, that there is a finance person, and then that furnace, finance director has Mona underneath, and they're working together, and then the bill comes from, and then gets forwarded to either you or LaCresca. If you're reviewing bills and then saying, or, or if Mona's reviewing the bill and then giving it to you, that use, that loses that chain of command or whatever, or it has to go through Mona.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're asking, but who approves the bills?
The, 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 the utility bills are being, because they're a utility bill, they just, they've been just going through. I sign the checks. I, I actually review, I review certain bills.
That's not my question.
Okay.
Who approves of the bill? When the VTEL bill was, every, came in every month, somebody had to say, yes, this is correct, pay it. We changed phone companies, yet we're still okaying the same bill for eleven months. That's not right.
It, I was not seeing those bills until this all came up two months ago when we were doing-
So then bills, who was approving that bill to be paid? That's how I run-
Were you seeing those? Not at this time, I don't think.
I don't sign off on any town bill. I sign off on all golf course bills after approval from golf course operations. And that's either David, the general manager, or Robert, the golf superintendent, or Steve, the food and beverage manager. I make them okay all those bills. I don't, on the town side?
But we didn't hire Mark for the golf course, to be honest with you. We hired Mark to take over the finance from you. And Mark now is here, I think he started the last month of June, last week of June, a year ago. So he's been here for twelve months. So we need to hand over to the finance director, the- And we need to come to, how is this gonna work? Cause you as a finance person in the municipal government, would you like to see work like the golf course, or would you like to see all the bills from the town come to you and Mona, and you two work as a group? That's what I pictured a finance department, you and Mona, and I'm hoping, when we get to this TIF thing, that we start talking about something else here, okay? Because, but we gotta get, we gotta get you and Mona working together. What I, what I feel like what I'm hearing is, is that you're, you're spending fifty, sixty percent of your time at the golf course.
Absolutely.
Okay? Which, this is another whole freaking blow my mind. But, you know, and then you're spending your other forty to fifty percent on what?
Town accounting. Non-accountable payable.
Right.
Town accounting, all the processes that the people in town hall learned for all these years. It's not accrual-based accounting. We're very close. I can, I can say that. It was cash basis, fifty years.
Right.
They didn't even know what accrual was, but our auditor said we're accrual-based. Not true.
Right.
It is now. So, fifty percent of my time over the last year was rebuilding the last five years of golf course accounting. It wasn't acceptable. So I've redone all of that, and now I have templates for everything for golf, where you can see what your operations means financially. Real, not voodoo accounting, not, where you process three months' bills in one week, and then you don't do anything, or whatever, you know?
And, and under the old group, it used to be, bills would come in in July from last November, okay? And I'm not saying that's anyone on the town side. That was coming from the old golf management.
So, I picked the golf course, which is an enterprise fund, and hopefully, or expectedly, should make money. I picked that as the first area to attack. I'm there, and I'm ready to pass that off, only we don't have anybody to do that.
We're gonna need to talk about that.
We can talk about that in another conversation.
Right.
Then it's the town side. How do we get the town on proper accrual accounting to complete it? I've already done a lot of the legwork.
Right. So where I wanna get you is like, right now, you have assistant with the golf course, okay? And the bills are coming through you.
So right now-
Would you have picked up for eleven months that we were paying too much money for the phone company?
Say again?
Would you have picked up, i- i- if we canceled that, would you have picked that up? I mean, have you seen, I mean, like, you don't see the bills, but we have to get it to something like that.
I see that finance director is seeing the bills and would make that. I think at this point, the proper thing to do is Chet currently approves all of the town's operating expenses.
Right.
Ideally, remove that from Chet's plate, give it to me, and I will look at it simply as, is it budgeted or not? And that will agree with the fact that Chet is gonna hand over the budgeting process this year.
Well, it's not Chet agrees, we-
Okay, but that's the reality, that I will be more involved with the department managers and actually lead the budget process.
Right.
With Chet's help. I mean, it's not a, it's not a him-me thing.
No, 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 it's the town.
But to, to, for proper controls and allocation of resources, that's how it should be.
Right.
And then, instead of Mona giving the bills to Chet, Mona gives the bills to me.
That would make sense to me.
And if I have a question, the first thing I'm gonna do is go to a department manager. See, I look at a utility bill as not needing department manager's approval, unless, because these bills go out there, and then all of a sudden you get a shut-off notice cause you didn't pay your electric bill. Absolutely unacceptable. If there's something weird about it, there's a conversation, there's an email correspondence with your department manager. What's going on with this? It's, it's not normal. Otherwise, those things are on autopilot, and they should be.
One hundred percent. But poor Mona's paying bills here that you didn't approve. You told me you didn't approve the phone bill.
Utility bills were-
Always saying that.
No, utility bills have, have just not, like, I don't see to see the oil bills, like, there are certain, just the, just the utility bills that he's talking about have been going straight through the process. I do all the things related to town hall and the highway department, and every department manager signs that they received the bills for their department, okay? Like-
There's a thing called checks and balances. So if it comes in that every si- so basically, we're, we're on public TV right now, thank you. Peg TV. So just send the freaking bill in, and then get it in as a, as a regular monthly bill, and then all of a sudden it's paid. It doesn't matter. That's not what we want.
Right.
So I think we hired a finance manager on as X for, and it was at, we, we approved it, Chuck Lafferty, Steve Finner, myself, and I think the suggestion that you're making is where we have to go, and that's gonna free up your time to manage other things in town.
I agree.
So, we've been asking this though for a while, so-
Well, just-
How do we get there to go?
Well, we, we've actually had talked about it. The transition was at this calendar year, this fiscal year, because he was getting to a point where he was caught up, and this was all getting turned over to him. It's just been a transition process. Um, that was one item. We got lost in-
July twenty-fifth, we're, we're already into our first month of twelve.
And that's why we're doing all of the adjustments to get it where it needs to be for this year, having the allocations correct, so that going forward, Mark will be able to go in, look at it, and make it happen.
Mark, do you think you can do this on your own without going through all this other stuff, just like you did with the golf course? We throw you in and start saying, you start, but we have to get something to help you out? I mean, isn't this just the same as you jumping in on the golf course?
Well, I, I've been doing this a long time. I know how to figure it out, but it's a question of resources.
So let's just move this, the conversation into, cause I think we should invite Mark in to, to see what he needs or whatever to, you know? You know, it just, and I just wanna say, and it doesn't matter because our husband's in here, but Mona has been doing a great job. And she is a valuable employee. And she is a valuable employee in here and she has not gone through any accounting college or anything. And I hate for us to keep on saying, you know, you know, she's getting bills and she's handing them off. Someone should be checking in checks and balances that they are what? And someone should have noticed, hey, I'm still getting billed for $1,100 a month.
I'd like just to comment that Mona is a class person and, yeah, she, and she wants, she, she is very careful to not pay a bill unless someone has said it's okay to pay. So in her defense, she's doing a great job. She's a valuable employee and that should be on public record if anything.
Does a great job.
So what else we got here?
Well, then there's the treasurer's report.
Yeah, but you, you basically told us that there's transitions going on between these two points or whatever and there's still gonna be some other changes?
Yes, I mean, I, I would argue that I would, I would hold off approving. I don't know if you wanted to discuss where we were at this point or do you wanna just pay the lose?
We just got the second revision of this.
So this is from the last fiscal year.
Yeah.
What we budgeted. So we had no propane here.
Where is this?
Fire department. And we had no electricity. We went through 363.
Which, which department are you looking under?
Page seven of 14.
If you're looking at the town's financials, if it's not listed on the fire department, it's probably.
It's public safety building, it's a fire department.
Which might be a little further down.
It's further up, actually.
This is old fires.
That's the old fire station. That's the old fire, that's the fire department budget. We pulled all those things out. So under public safety, propane, we use $19,454. And electricity was 15,790.
And we weren't billing individually the police.
Right. It's just the building. It's, this is, we set that up as its own item, so it's just the building that's being.
So where's the public safety building at?
It's page.
Page four, six.
Before.
It's above police.
So it's on page six.
So that whole category should just go away then?
Which one, the fire department?
Well, the fire department, those items, full zero.
Yeah, those items, you have to carry them for, we carried them for another year with all the actuals when you have the two years and it'll go out.
Yep.
So, but that's, it's just in the public safety.
Went through some propane, ooh.
Yeah, and this year, and everything was twice as much as last year.
We don't lock in?
Well, we, we are paying a small percentage above rack.
Again, we don't lock in.
I know, we, we have not locked into this point. Like since the beginning of time.
Really, really suggestive.
Okay.
The school just locked in, I think, a dollar 72 on propane for two years. I wouldn't go two years, but.
I wouldn't either.
You know, but I'm being told right now, just for somewhere around 12,000 gallons, I'm gonna be a dollar 72 to a dollar 78 for 12,000 gallons.
Need another number?
I offered you people in town, you know, on my little program last year. And you all had this grade, I only pay X amount over rack.
We're a year, we're a year late.
I can pay $3 a gallon.
We're a year late and we still wanna, we wanna join your lovely group.
Yeah. Talk to you next week, I'll put them together.
You're late 176% over budget.
I probably could have got a dollar 50 a gallon if I had this usage.
I know.
So we're skipping over golf then?
Yeah, we're skipping over all the financials until, I mean, we just really got this, you know, this afternoon.
Yeah, the revised.
The reason why is the golf or whatever. Because of the bond payment or whatever. So there was no receipt, no revenue.
So we'll do that on the 11.
Lister corrections?
Uh, lister's correction. I have one lister's correction. It was a request from Lori Budney. They have a house on, uh, but Lori Budney is requesting under errors and omissions that the value of her house be deducted from her 2022, 23 tax bill. Uh, her reasoning is the building was torn down in November of '21. She states that she spoke with Chuck Laffey to see if there was a permit needed and was told no. The listers were not informed of this either by Mrs. Budney or Chuck, so the value of the house remains as part of the valuation of the property. Listers do not believe that there was any error or omission on their part and we suggest no change be granted. Some things to consider. The property is tucked away on a dead end road, not visible from any other roadways and not noticed by the listers in their normal travels. Listers were not informed of the raising by anyone. A search of the email history doesn't turn up any correspondence related to tearing down the house and there aren't any notes in the file. Listers have visited the property, can verify the house has been raised and the land returns to its normal condition. We have updated our files so that the valuation for next year will reflect there is no longer a house. The current valuation for the land is $266,780. The value of the house was 79,320. Total taxes, house and land were $6,016,92. The tax on just the house is $1,967. If approved, the new tax on just the land would be $4,649.
Yeah, let's just put this into executive session for legal.
Was there a drive-in for you?
No, actually, they did, we did not make that with Nicole. She was away last week, so we gotta go visit that again.
Does anyone else have anything before we go into executive session? We have a hand in back.
Yeah, so I'm just curious as if you're gonna discuss it. Chet and I talked, he was going to have you guys appoint me to the.
Oh, Rowland County Solway District Board.
So moved. Second?
You sure? You still wanna put your name in? Don't you wanna get your name in?
You seconded? I think Chris seconded. Call the question. Hi. Do you still have any other citizens in place? Roger's iPhone is quiet.
Yeah, it's on.
There he is. Nope, he's good. All right, so you have other.
I'm still here.
All right, other business? Any other business?
I have no other business.
What about landing commission?
Oh, that one.
That's other business.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Excuse, oh, your hand's raised.
Yeah.
So.
Before we, before we.
Go ahead.
Before we get too far from this, let me, from, what did, I couldn't hear half of what was said at the very end. What happened? What was decided?
We're gonna take it into executive session for legal and come out after that. I have a couple of questions, legal.
Can I ask a non-legal question before you do it?
Sure.
Sure.
Does anybody ask Chuck about this?
Well, that's one of my questions I'll be asking when we go in, but, um, and then also asking if we bask legal, so, but let's wait till we come out of executive session for legal.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So other business, you have, Tony?
Yeah, uh, this afternoon, planning, this afternoon, I received an email from our planner, Daryl. Last Thursday, July 20th, the planning commission approved updates to the zoning bylaws for the purposes of updating dimensional and parking requirements, standards and policies for the commercial, commercial business, business districts to promote compact development and affordable housing for year-round workers and their families in support of the Killington Forward Plan. Additional updates to the bylaws proposed, the elimination of the deposit requirement, simplification of accessory dwelling unit language and the removal of the zoning district descriptions. And then there's the, the list of changes. So basically, and I have the certificate of municipal bylaw amendment signed by our town clerk certifying that, that shift to the town, to the select board. And the select board will need to warn a public hearing. We have more than 15 days, so if the select board decides to warn the public hearing tonight for August 11th, we could include it in our next regular meeting.
I'm gonna make a motion to move forward with the planning commission's recommendation to have the select board move forward for our August 11th hearing. And then we'll all get copies of the.
Yeah.
Changes.
Correct.
And they're already posted at the.
They're posted at town hall. They've been posted because the planning commission had them up for their 15 days, so we're right, we should be good.
So I'm gonna make a motion first to go into executive session for legal.
One other question of business. And there may not be an answer for this tonight, but it's something I think we need to look at. I am seeing more and more and more of these storage containers in people's driveways and, uh, there's one down by Mountain Meadows. I think it's in what's supposed to be their parking. It might even be in the town right of way. What's the procedure, if you will, to see?
Well, nobody's allowed to have, I mean, DRB, nobody's allowed to have anything in the right of way, right? Other than a sign, right? Okay? Well, that's, that's not even in the right of way because it's not on theirs. So we'll have to go out there and take a look, okay? I'll have to take a look at that.
But are they allowed to have the.
You're allowed, so you're.
For indefinite amount of time.
Yeah, well, number one, you're allowed to have a storage container of, if it's less than 144, but most of these things are 20 by, by eight, so that's 160 square feet. So it's over the 144 rule. If somebody comes in and just fills out a zoning permit for one of these, as long as it meets the setback, it's the same thing as a shed.
I thought it was because of, originally because of temporary structure.
Well, no, there's one, so on one, you can put a temporary structure for six months, I believe, okay? But the minute you go over six months, you need to come in and you need to just file for zoning. Doesn't say you can't have two or three of them because you have your total square footage that you're allowed. And that means that they just have to come in and file for a zoning, just like they would for a shed for more than 144 square feet.
So my only question is, and I don't know if it makes any difference, I don't remember, is a temporary structure still have to meet the setbacks? I can't remember if the temporary, if it's only gonna be there for six months, if it has to meet like, if you had a.
It does, it does, it does say that a temporary structure still needs to meet the setback.
Right. Okay.
So, you know.
So the six months is just related to the permit then?
Yeah, so, so, you know, I, I, there's the one up on, where's that road by Cliff Road that goes through? That was the main road there by Klaus and.
West Park?
West Park, up further, there's, there's, I've gone up there and I have sent out that it's, it beats the setbacks, there's only one. There was more than one there before, but now there's only one. And I have sent out a letter to the owner of the property saying, just please fill out a zoning permit and, you know, it's whatever the charges are, they'll get it permitted because it's, it meets the setbacks.
Okay, well, that's my question.
So if, if Mountain Meadows or anybody else has one and it's gonna be more than six months, then they need to file a zoning. They're not gonna get denied as long as they meet all the requirements.
Okay.
So.
Good job. That was it for me.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session for legal so that at least we can come out from that and go into the longer section.